Good afternoon, members, and to the viewing public and to the public that are here in the gallery. I see our honorable mayor, RB for Saipan, welcome to your chamber. I see Mr. Quitugwa here also, the chamber, and Mr. DJ Sablon. We have also a former Congressman William Torres joining us out there in the hall. And we have Mr., welcome, Mr. Paul Regis. The chair now calls this second day first regular session into order dated Friday, February twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three. At this time, let us stand for a moment of silence. Thank you, members. Madam Clerk, please go to her.
Representative Fatah.
Yeah, yeah.
Representative Faudon.
Here.
Representative Fatah.
Present.
Senator Babalta.
Present.
Representative Benaventi.
Very good.
Representative Camacho Angelo.
Present.
Representative Camacho Diego.
Present.
Representative Camacho Joel.
Yeah, yeah.
Representative Camacho Senti.
Present.
Representative Castro.
Present.
Senator Delion Guerrero.
Present.
Representative Flores Joseph.
Present.
Representative Flores Marisa.
Present.
Senator Magofnia.
Yeah, yeah.
Representative Manglonia. Representative Omar.
Present.
Representative Props.
Present.
Chairman Sablon. Representative Villagomez.
Here.
Representative Yangtami.
Yeah, yeah.
Representative Yumo. Mister Chairman, we have twenty members present, one member absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The record reflect that there is twenty members present, and we duly establish constitute a quorum. That also the record reflect that Representative Ralph Yumo is here by excuse. Moving along on our next order business, which is item B, reading an approval of the journal. Madam Clerk.
Mister Chairman, we have one Snail Journal number twenty-three oh one dated January twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I recognize our floor leader.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I now offer motion to adopt Snail Journal twenty-three oh one, first day first regular session dated January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
There is a motion offered by a floor leader for the adoption of Snail Journal number twenty-three dash zero one. It has been seconded. Discussion on the motion. Ready? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Now moving along on our order of business is item C, public comments, and at this time, the podium is open. We ask that you state your name for the record, and if you can put your statements in three minutes, and if need be, we will allow you for more comments. The podium is open now.
Good afternoon, Mister Chairman, Vice Chairman, floor leader, and member of this body. My name is Ramon Camacho. I'm the mayor for the municipality of Saipan. Mister Chairman, a member of this body, I'm here. I submit my comments on February sixteen regarding the House Local Bill number twenty-three dash zero one to appropriate eight hundred thousand on the local revenue. Mister Chairman, I see here that a hundred and fifty thousand to be allocated to the municipality of Saipan. If you see the comments that I submitted, I didn't add, I did not itemize down the breakdown of the hundred and fifty thousand. Reason behind that, that I'm trying to avoid of transferring funds to the assigned appropriate funding on each item. Reason of that because the mayor of Saipan implement so many programs within our community. And one is I'm ready lining up for the preparation for the Fourth of July. So we had already two meetings with the potential chairman for this liberation committee. Second is we implement this adopt-a-place program within our municipality. And the other one is the adopt-a-place and the coming up village inspection. The other one is the implementation of the neighborhood watch within our municipality. I think majority of the precinct legislators witness the action of the mayor of Saipan in every precinct here. We're trying to help each other to beautify and promote a safe community, safe village, and a clean island here in this municipality. So with that reason, I humbly ask each and every one of you to please consider and give that hundred and fifty thousand to the municipality of Saipan, so we can make use of that to promote safe community, safe village, and a clean island. Done.
Thank you, and Jesus Masi, Mayor RB Camacho. The podium is still open for anyone who wishes to make comments. Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Good afternoon to these members of this body. My name is Mister Edwin Ramon Borakirwa. I don't know if I should skip to the end of this part, but I stand today to ask this body. Because I've been given notations from prominent elected officials here that the only reason that the issue of the Indigenous Affairs Office is because of funding. Yet, I see here the followers for good governance is requesting funding. In that motion of that action, I feel discriminated for the mere fact I want to be on the record. And I want to suggest that why is it so hard for this body to consider tapping what is written in the constitution directly from the Marans Public Land Trust? This Indigenous Affairs Office, that's its money. If you all and in the previous administrations have tapped that entity, why can this entity tap itself to survive for the betterment and advancement of the indigenous community? Why do I feel second when I was an audit by U.S. Congress that I am an indigenous, not an NMD? So I bring forth to this body to consider once and for all that this entity should be funded directly from the constitution where it's mandated. And it has money. There's hundred and sixty million, I believe, of its money. What is the problem? I don't see no problem. I only see excuses. I hear excuses. I'm offering a solution. Because that belongs to the indigenous people. Now let's beef. There's a gray line here. Because like I said, there is a problem with the constitution and the covenant agreement. And I want to, I want to stress out one issue into the covenant agreement which affects everybody here who considers themselves U.S.-born, naturalized U.S. citizens. We have that clause that if one day, let me give you a scenario. What if we choose the people, we choose another foreign country to be under our sovereignty? All those people that are U.S. citizens, are they transferable with us? No, they're not. So that is the scenario I want to bring forth, that there is a problem that needs to be directed with the United States Congress and our indigenous status here. I wouldn't come out and issue this problem and direct it to you all if I do not feel it. I feel it in the community. I see it. So I only ask your help and understanding on the matter to please consider my suggestion. Again, it's its money that even funds the state. Pays your salaries here. It's its money. What are you holding it against? To survive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Quitugwa. The podium is still open for anyone here in the gallery that wishes to make comment. Seems to be none. We move further down on our order of business, item D, introduction of local bills. And at this time, I recognize Representative Blas Jonathan Atto.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Formally introducing to the delegation House Local Bill number twenty-three dash zero one to appropriate eight hundred thousand from revenues collected for the third senatorial district pursuant to public law twenty-five-nine and for other purposes introduced by myself and several others. And Mister Chairman, I know you'll be recognizing the floor leader for the proper motion. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Representative Fato. At this time, I recognize the floor leader for the proper motion.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I now offer a motion to place House Bill twenty-three, House Local Bill twenty-three dash zero one, substitute one for on today's, I'm sorry, House Local Bill twenty-three zero one on today's bill calendar for action today.
Do I hear a second?
So moved.
There is a motion offered by our floor leader to place House Local Bill number twenty-three dash zero one on today's bill calendar. It has been seconded. Discussion on the motion. Ready? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you, members. Moving along in our order of business, there happens to be none on item E, introduction of local resolutions. None on item F, messages from the governor. We now move down to item G, messages from the mayors of Saipan and Northern Islands. Madam Clerk.
Mister Chairman, we have two. Mayor's communication twenty-three oh one and twenty-three oh two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on communications from the mayor of Saipan and Northern Islands. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along, we move down to item H, reports and communication from heads and departments and agency. Madam Clerk.
Mister Chairman, we have three. Department and agency number twenty-three oh one through twenty-three oh three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on reports and communication from heads and department and agency. Recognize Senator Edif Guerrero.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Just a brief question on communications from the department heads regarding twenty-three oh one and twenty-three oh two respectively. I'm just curious to know if the indirect cost monies that are set aside from federal grants that are being held by the Department of Finance is allowable to purchase such needs as vehicle and field funding for the enforcement boats. I think that's something for us to look into. I understand that indirect cost monies set aside from federal grants are in the millions of dollars, and it would be interesting to know if some of these needs of the department can be subsidized by the indirect cost allocation. Thank you very much, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Guerrero. So noted. Further discussion. Recognize Representative Vince Faudon.
Yes, I got a question about this department and agencies number twenty-three zero one with funding. So accordingly, they're saying that, where is this? First and foremost, a right to seek assistance and participate in procuring vehicles to help in our daily tasks to ensure critical public service provided to conduct field operation such as overt and covert gaming surveillance operation. This vehicle will be utilized for the daily tasks for DRT gaming enforcement. Okay? So what exactly do we need or why would they need a forty-six thousand dollar four-runner V-six vehicle and a forty-two thousand dollar Toyota Tacoma V-six engine to conduct such an operation?
That's a great question, Representative Faudon. But this division of revenue tax are the, is the enforcement section. And I think we should question that to, the chair would ask the division, but these are the enforcement that enforces the collection for our local delegation funds. And they're requesting assistance from this august body for assistance for a vehicle so that they can assist, so that it can assist them with their enforcement work.
And I totally agree with that, but a Toyota, why not a Mazda? Because I'm pretty sure there's no poker place up in Montapochó that would justify a four-wheel drives V-six vehicle in the two of forty-six thousand dollars.
I agree with you. That's a great question.
I agree with them purchasing a vehicle. Just rest.
Do you, Representative Faudon?
Yes, that's you.
Any further discussion? Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along in our order of business, we go, move down to item I, House Communications. Madam Clerk.
Mister Chairman, we have two. House Communication twenty-three oh one and twenty-three oh two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on House Communications. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along, item J, Senate Communications. Madam Clerk.
We have one, Mister Chairman. Senate Communication twenty-three oh one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on Senate Communications. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along, item K, Delegation Matters. Madam Clerk.
Mister Chairman, we have twenty-two. We have delegation matters twenty-three oh one through twenty-three, twenty-two.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on delegation matters. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving now to item L, Miscellaneous Communications. Madam Clerk.
Mister Chairman, we have seven. Miscellaneous Communication number twenty-three oh one through twenty-three oh seven.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussions on miscellaneous communications. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along, we have, there happens to be none on item M, reports of standing committee. None on item N, reports of special conference committee. None on item O, unfinished business. There is none on item P, resolution calendar. We now move to item Q, bill calendar. And at this time, I recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I now offer a motion to, to first and final, House Bill twenty-three oh one to appropriate eight hundred thousand from revenues collected for the third senatorial district pursuant to public law twenty-five-nine and for other purposes. So moved.
There, there is a motion that is offered by our floor leader for the passage of House Local Bill twenty-three dash zero one, and it has been seconded. Discussion on the motion. Recognize Representative Blas Jonathan Atto.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I believe every member have received the substitute version for twenty-three dash one. Yes, so I'm formally introducing a substitute to House Local Bill twenty-three dash one in the form of substitute one. And just to break down some of the changes that were, were done. None under item A, which one fifty, will go to the mayor's office. Fifty thousand or to Saipan mayor's office, fifty thousand to the Northern Islands mayor's office. Two hundred and forty thousand to the delegation's operations. Sixty thousand to the Saipan Municipal Council for the matching of the new municipal building. Thirty thousand to the board of parole. Now a new F would be the twenty thousand. It would be, it would reflect the, the Chamolinian Cultural Village Inc. anniversary. They will be bringing in visitors from, I believe, Poland and Bulgaria for the, the big cultural event that they will be participating in here in the Cinemai, which is a good program for not just Saipan, but the Cinemai as we will be able to see some, some new tourists on the ground and get their monies out of their pockets so they can spend in our community. And then we have a new line item G, and I apologize to the, to the members that we will be, we'll be taking the funds from precinct projects. We will be utilizing the two hundred and fifty thousand as distributed to the five precincts to address the medical referral concerns that were brought up by CHCC requesting for additional three point two million dollars. The two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars will address the stipends for medical referral patients from the third senatorial district, just so that the legislative intent is understood by CHCC that these monies will be utilized for patients receiving care outside of Cinemai that are from the third senatorial district. That's, those are the only changes for the, in the substitute version. I introduce as a substitute version because it's a much cleaner version, and the members can follow. And the members of the public that, that are present today, so they know that the funding sources, the funding that will be assisting therein will not be touched. I so move with the substitute version, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Representative Blas Jonathan Atto. There is a motion offered by Representative Atto. Motion to offer a substitute one, and it has been seconded. Discussion on the motion. Ready? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion adopted. We now move to the main motion, which is now House Local Bill twenty-three dash zero one, substitute one. Discussion. Ready? Thank you, members. Madam Clerk, please go to her.
Representative Fatah.
Yes.
Representative Faudon.
Yes.
Representative Fatah.
Yes.
Senator Babalta.
Yes.
Representative Benaventi.
Good.
Representative Camacho Angelo.
Yes.
Representative Camacho Diego.
Yes.
Representative Camacho Joel.
Good.
Representative Camacho Senti.
Yes.
Representative Castro.
Hungan.
Senator Delion Guerrero.
Yes.
Representative Flores Joseph.
Yes.
Representative Flores Marisa.
Yes.
Senator Magofnia.
Hungan.
Representative Manglonia. Representative Omar.
Yes.
Representative Props.
Yes.
Representative Villagomez.
Our.
Representative Yangtami.
Our.
Mister Chairman.
Hungan.
Mister Chairman, all twenty members voted yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With twenty members present voting in the affirmative, House Local Bill twenty-three dash zero one, substitute one, here passes the delegation. Thank you, members. Moving along in our order of business, we now move to item R, miscellaneous business. Are there any members? Recognize Representative Blas Jonathan Atto.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Just want to thank the members of the delegation for supporting the substitute version of the, of the bill. And I apologize again that we had to move some funds from our, our precinct projects, but we will find some additional sources to address those concerns, and we'll work together as members of this delegation to address the needs of each of our precincts. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
You, Representative Fato, further discussion on miscellaneous business? Ready? We move down to item S, announcement. Are there any announcement? Recognize Representative Malcolm Omar.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I'd just like to make an announcement about the Precinct Four community resume that's open for comments until the end of the month, this month. This Precinct Four community resume was a project funded last term by Rep., then Rep. Sheila Babalta and Empower Solutions and is spearheading the efforts. This resume or report showcases our precinct's strengths, resources, and demographics. Just like a personal resume, it will be an evolving document updating as our community grows over the years. It's important for our community members and leaders to learn about Precinct Four using data that is scattered so we can make better informed decisions for our villages. In a nutshell, we know now that in Precinct Four, over fifty percent of the population identify as Chamorro. The unemployment rate is ten point twenty-two percent, and there are about seven hundred and eighty licensed businesses in the community. These are just a few fun facts that was gathered. So to the viewing public and to the members in the house or in the chamber, I asked that you check out the Precinct Four community resume. It's posted on our social media page. You can search up the Precinct Four Saipan on Facebook. And any comments on either segments or slides or photos, comments, suggestions, or your thoughts would be really helpful. Thank you again, Mister Chairman and members.
Thank you, Representative Omar. Are there any other announcements? Recognize Representative Vince Faudon.
Good morning, members. Yeah, there, there will be a, today I just got off, I just finished a meeting with the Department of Justice and the EPA with regards to CUC stipulated order one and two. Tomorrow, our month, the twenty-seventh, all the way to the third, which is next week, they're going to be doing a public hearing at the federal court, and it's open unto the public. And if any of your constituents, and I'm pretty sure there's pretty much all of them, that are asking about the fact question, that is the place to get that answer. So if you guys are interested, I highly recommend that, you know, we go over there and listen to the questions that it's going to be asking, and it's open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Adno. Aldan, I'm sorry. Any further announcement? Recognize the vice chairman.
Thank you. Just for the members' information, I'd just like to announce that Tutud Park that is near in front of Tutud, it will be starting their construction soon. And that's for all the precinct one representative, but just to extend out the message to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Benaventi. Any further announcements? Ready? Thank you members. At this time, I recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I now offer a motion to adjourn today's meeting subject to the call of the chair. So moved.
There is a motion offered by the floor leader for adjournment and it has been seconded. Discussion on the motion. Ready? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. We are now adjourned.